I'd like to call the City of Commission meeting to order Marine City Fire Hall Thursday, April 19th, 7:00 PM. Complete stand for Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we take a brief moment of silence for our dearly departed? Roll call, please.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
President.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Lepley is absent.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Levin, the Jets, and so on.
All right, moving on to communications. We did want to take one item of out of communications and move it down to...
I'll make a motion to move item 4A, David Simpson's resignation, to item 10B under new business.
Can I get support? Motion support, any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, I need a motion to receive and file monthly activity reports, Marine City area fire run reports, the zoning board of appeals minutes, March 7th, and the planning commission meeting, March 12th. Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we receive and file the remainder of the communications on the agenda list.
Support. Any questions on the reports, the communications? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Mr. Haas.
Well, that's two of three pleasant streets. For the record, Christina Baxter, I would like to record to show that at 1:00 29 minutes, 29 seconds of the April 5th Marine City Commission meeting, Commissioner Beckley Lepley was heard calling Commissioner Terrence Avery to vote no on the roll call vote. Being as that said, you know, Mr. Keith Jenkins stood up here and said, "These are your commissioners are the ones who do everything on the TIPA board." So if Becky Lepley, you know, she's... There's a problem here. Did you... What's the protocol? Did you go to the county clerk? Did you do anything? How about her city attorney? I mean, when commissioners are telling commissioners how to vote, when a husband is on the committee, the TIPA board, serious problem. Or am I mistaken? Am I the fool? I don't know. So hopefully, we did write protocol. Dual investigation. Let's see what's happening. All right. I told the people last week about the property taxes. You can go on the St. Clair County State Equalize Property Tax Search. You can even pull it up. They'll show you where the property is at. County also has what they call a court docket search, in case you'd like to look and see what your neighbor problems with the county, problems with the law. City officials, you can look up public leaders. You know, anybody you want to, take a look, pull them up. Look me up, Bill Haas, H-A-A-S. I got no problem. I say, "I ain't here, I ain't hiding nothing. I just want to know what's going on." Like I say, I've been busy, got kids, got academic awards at the school board coming up Monday. I got, you know, kid soccer stuff going on. I haven't been in to see why the property taxes are, you know, the 40/20, why there's differences. But, you know, it's got to be some protocol, got to be some accountability. Like I say, 12 years, 12 years I've raised two kids. For 20-some years, I could care less what happened to this city. Nice, quiet little community, that's what I came here for. And all of a sudden, everybody wants to turn it into Royal Oak. If, you know, what'd you move out to the country, out to the peaceful neighborhood for? You know, I don't know if anybody's taken a look and driven through St. Clair, but pretty soon, we're going to have to support the Burton's pretty hard so we don't have a drug corner over there. Because they've already got one building up on their multi-million dollar plaza they got going up there in St. Clair. And it's amazing how fast that's going up. They're going to get the three buildings set up, they'll be renting those out while they finish the rest of it, more than likely. But Matt, we need some accountability in this town. 12 years. You know, like I say, y'all think I'm crazy. I don't think I'm crazy. I think I see things that shouldn't be happening. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I think I'll... My mic up like 20 Pleasant Street. I think I'll echo a couple of things that Bill said, one being accountability. We've had a lack of accountability in this town for a long time. One of the biggest lacks of accountability was TIPA. We got rid of that, which is great, awesome. Congratulations, well-done job there. And, you know, I heard the same thing with Becky Lepley telling Mr. Avery how to vote the other day. I don't know the legality of it, but, you know, the fact that she told him not to vote, and then she storms out of here when she's done because she didn't get her way, that's not what we expect out of our public officials. And this town deserves better. And she's not here tonight. I didn't hear a vote excusing her absence, so I'm kind of wondering what's going on there, if she's actually excused, or if she's just a no-show, or is she resigning? I don't know what's going on. But she definitely should be here if she's going to represent the city. And if she doesn't, if she has no interest in representing the city and only representing her own private interests, then yeah, stay home, because we can move forward without her, and her husband too. And this town will be in much better shape. And getting back to the accountability thing, it's been a month now where our city manager said she was going to do her due diligence, her words, on the whole fiasco with our police chief letting a, you know, a drunk man with a gun just sleep it off till the morning, till he chose to turn himself in, only 1,000 feet from our school grounds. And, you know, it was kind of concerning to me that last meeting, it wasn't even mentioned. Nothing was mentioned about what was being done, investigation, investigation of policies, procedures, protocols, if there are any. If there isn't, what kind of protocols are going to be established going forward to ensure that nothing like that happens again? Because at the very least, at the very least, the neighbors should have all been told what was going on, they should have all been told to stay in the house, they should have all been warned. And the fact that it's so close to the school, it should have never happened. And none of that, none of it was done, none of it. And I just really want to communicate to you guys that we're still waiting for an answer to that.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Melch Hance, I live at 435 South Main. I was here a few months ago and talked to you about the Holy Land. But anyway, I have to agree with these gentlemen. This town has gone right down the tubes. I don't know what it is, all the time it takes to figure out a parking thing, what do you got about landowners or renters? Nothing. Nothing. You could... I'm living next door to a slum. Nobody cares. You're worried about the sidewalk. The kids rake the leaves. They've been sitting in the middle of the sidewalk for five weeks. My neighbor across the street says he gets a letter from the inspector. She came by and says his house numbers are too short. Those numbers have been there for 40 years. The only one that hasn't been there for 40 years is the inspector. My neighbor is almost blind, says, "I can read the numbers from this side of the street." But that's okay. She didn't notice all the trash on the sidewalk. A woman slipped in it the other day. I said, "If you go to court, I'll be your witness." When I mention something, when I catch up to the landlord, he tells me, "The city ain't going to do nothing to me, they're going to bitch to you, but they ain't saying nothing to me." Mr. Avery complained about the red envelopes with the newspaper in them being blight. Everybody agreed. The renters next door to me, pick them up now and throw them on the front roof of the porch, but they're not on the street. The kids break red brick to make chalk, and when you stumble on the pieces of brick, they throw them in the street. I had a woman call me from St. Clair and said, "Why two doors down or a couple doors down? They got five mattresses on the front porch." I said, "'Cause we're working on Water Street. You're not supposed to come down Main unless you want to speed and make a shortcut cutting through town." I don't know what's wrong with this town, but it's gone down the pike. It's really bad. This used to be a fun place to live. Now you just worry about what's going to happen. What else can go in the tube? Got an inspector looking for stuff? Why don't you talk to the people? I agree with the guy. The people come up from, he said, Royal Oak, and they want to... They don't want to be there. That's why they moved out here. And when they get here, now we want what was back there. I don't agree with it, and I don't like it. Maybe if I sold my house to somebody or rented it back, we wouldn't have these problems. Turned it into a bunch of renters. Heck, we could knock the houses down, turn it into a trailer park. Then we'd have Water Street and a trailer park. You people are really running this into the ground.
Sorry to say.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, moving on to approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda is amended.
Any questions, concerns on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Need approval for the City Commission meeting, April 5th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Commission regular meeting minutes of April
Support. Any corrections or deletions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, any approval for City Commission closed session minutes, April 5th, 2018?
I'll make a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes of April 5th, 2018.
Support. Any questions on the closed session minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the business license for Cofflin Jewelers, Ackett Farms to Kettle Soups, Inon Water Street, Earth Star Wisdom LLC, and Treps Treasures. Motion approved, as submitted.
Support.
Any questions on those? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes. Next, we have the ordinance for recreational equipment. We're asking it to be tabled for now due to some language issues with the original reading. Motion to table.
Support.
Any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to new business, Jonathan Markle, Eagle Scout project.
Hi, I'm Jonathan. I'm with Boy Scout Troop 296 on Marine City. I am planning my Eagle Scout project. For my project, I'd like to install an ADA swing set. So that's a handicap wheelchair swing at the beach. I've spoken to some citizens of Marine City that are wheelchair-bound or have kids that are wheelchair-bound, and they said the beach would be the best for them. I met with Mr. Itrich from the DPW and discussed the location within the park, which would be next to the current playground equipment at the beach. I plan to make my fundraise using pop-out drives, car wash, asking for donation letters, giving out donation letters. And my goal on the... I have to get a city approval from someone in the city for a beneficiary, and then with the goal for the project being complete, I would like to have it done as soon as possible.
How long do you think it's going to take to raise?
I am... It depends.
Okay. Do you have a cost of what the project's going to cost?
We got... For this equipment, it's going to be 25,000, 25,000, or 2,500. But you got cement and sand to add into it.
I met with Jonathan and his father, and I think it's a wonderful project. I also talked to our city manager before she went on vacation, and she's willing to work too with him on some of the additional cement along with our DPW head. And I just think it's a wonderful project, and I really appreciate you taking this one on.
Thank you.
In the fire department, we collect bottles here, so we give certain bottles out to to nonprofit groups already. So we'll set up a date with you, you can come and get the bottles that we've collected, and you can have those for your bottle drive, so...
Thank you, too.
Let me know how my car's always dirty.
(laughing).
And if you do...
I'll let you know if we get a car wash.
If you want to do a car wash, we'll set one up here for you at the station, too, and the guys will give you a handset and it up.
Okay.
I guess I'd like to make a motion that we approve his project base, and then let him work out all the details with our DPW head.
Support. Motion support. Any questions for this gentleman or for the project? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.[1071.66][1071.66](applause). All right, moving on to City Commission vacancy.
Uh, no.
His resignation.
Resignation.
I can make a motion. Mr. Mayor, under the charter, the...
After a resignation letter is received by an elected city commissioner, at the next meeting, the commission has to act on that, be... Act to accept the resignation. So that's why we're moving it from communication to an action item.
Okay. Do we need to first read the letter into...
No, you could just... Somebody could make a motion to accept the resignation as set forth in the letter dated.
All right.
Chris, could you read it in for us?
I would be happy to, since I find it here. Mayor Van Bosh and city commissioners, please allow this letter to serve as official notice of my resignation from the City of Marine City Commission, effective with the receipt of this letter by our city clerk on April 16th, 2018. I have sold my home and will be moving out of the city, and therefore will no longer be eligible to serve on the City Commission. I would like to thank the citizens of Marine City, my fellow commissioners, and the city staff for the opportunity to serve the city over the past 12 years. I appreciate the support, trust, and hard work of everyone that has helped to move the city forward. I wish Marine City continued success and look forward to continue to serve with civic groups as I continue to work in the community. Sincerely, David L. Simpson.
Can I get a motion to accept this letter?
I'm making a motion to accept this letter, resignation dated 4/16/2018.
Any questions or concerns on the letter? Yes.
No concerns. I'd just like to thank Dave, I wish he was here. He's always done hard work for the city. He's always tried to be fair and do the right thing for everybody, and it's been a pleasure to serve with him.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Avery.
I'll speak just to add that that was well said, and I'm sure we all feel that way. Dave was a good contributing member.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the election of the mayor pro temp.
Make a motion to appoint Lisa Hendricks as mayor pro temp.
I'll second that. Any questions or concerns on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next, we have Dave Seet on the planning commission. Do we want to do that as...
These were just points that we need to address eventually.
Right.
I didn't know what you wanted me to do today. Do you want to wait till Sunday to see it?
We could, but on the planning, it's pretty busy right now with the Wade Trim. Is that one appointed by the mayor, or is that...
I believe it's by the mayor. I don't have that written from the way...
Bill, would you be interested in sitting on that? With your background?
The planning commission?
As a representative for the...
Yeah, I could. It's a next meeting, right? After 5:00.
Monday night.
Yeah.
I think the liaison position between the City Commission and the Planning Commission.
I'd like to nominate Bill Flossin for that position.
I'll support that.
Any questions or concerns on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. We can hold off on the SEMCOG until we get somebody seated.
Okay.
Then...
So what do we do with this one?
Yeah, we're going to... We're going to have to set a... Accept applications for...
That's correct.
For the... To fill this for the next two, little over two and a half years.
Yep, two and a half years till November of 2020.
So anyone interested, please fill out a board application letter, interest in a resume, if you have one, so... And have that in by Monday, May 7th, by 5:00 PM to the City Hall. Then we're going to need to set a hearing date for the 2018-2019 budget.
This is for the budget workshops.
Budget workshop.
Workshop.
Yep. No, no, this is for the budget.
No, this is for the budget after the workshops.
Your workshops are already set.
We already have that set. This is for the budget.
Okay, you gave us this other one.
That's just a reminder for next week.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we set up for the public hearing for the proposed 2018-19 proposed budget will be held on May 17th, 2018 at 7:00 PM at the fire hall.
Motion for setting up the public hearing. Any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the commercial use sidewalk outdoor sales cafe discussion. Lisa, you got some questions on that?
Yeah, I guess I was trying to go through this, and I know we have issues with downtown, you know, because everybody puts out stuff on the sidewalks, okay? Is that what this for? Because, I mean, this just talks about outdoor displays of material intended for retail sale or rental or a cafe. What about if people just have stuff? So I'm trying to figure out how this was...
Commissioner Turner, Stephanie, put this on the agenda so we could discuss it, so I don't know if you had something to add.
Sure. More specifically, I was interested in the outdoor cafe part of it. I think, well, there's more than just that, but just a level set, everybody. What's going on is we're revamping our... Some of our ordinances, it's currently with the planning commission. They did a first review. These are amendments that were proposed by Wade Trim and Associates. Part of it that I wanted to see talked about is the fact that sidewalk usage and signage has been a pending agenda item for this commission for two years now. So I asked that it get on there, primarily because it's going to take probably till July before it gets final approval. And this being a weather-sensitive type thing, I wanted to get some discussion going, talk out the particulars, the details of what we have to do to get this approved so that businesspeople that would like to take advantage of it don't have to wait till July for us to then decide how we're going to regulate. So wanted to get some conversation going here now. Hopefully, we could try to fast-track some of this stuff so that even if we gave them temporary approval or some means to not have to wait till the middle of summer to start reacting, so... One of the primary things that's happening here that's new is Code 160.235, outdoor cafe service in central business districts. I think that's something that we don't really have regulation for. I was looking at the procedures, what permit would you even apply for? We don't have one. Fee schedules would probably have to be adjusted for this, because, again, we don't have this. It's a new ordinance, so we don't have a fee schedule for this particular item. And just the idea that, like Lisa pointed out, the sidewalk concern about usage. The ordinances state that you have to maintain five feet of clearance for passage, but that's about as far as it goes, as far as the sidewalk usage, so just to get some conversation started here tonight.
Do you have a situation where a lot of people would want the outdoor cafe service ability seem like it'd be popular? I would think so.
More and more.
Yeah, we have some of it now, but we don't have any real regulations. The only thing I found is I know the feds have a... They have some regulations on how they deal with signs in one section, open areas in another, and then they regulate for stuff in the third section. But I know we have to be careful, because our sidewalks aren't that wide enough.
Yeah, it depends on where you're at, though.
Yeah, it does. So... But then I thought, this said it has the cafe stuff, but then I was wondering, what about somebody that just wants to put a pot of flowers out, or if they just want a bench on there, not just the cafe? Because the other portion is for materials for sale, so I'm concerned that we're not covering just, you know, what somebody wants to put out as a decoration.
Ornamental, or...
Yeah. Because we've had that issue, too, before, so...
Right. What would your cafe duration be? Would it be seasonal? I don't...
Well, this says that it's just for when they're open. Then they'd have to put it all away, so... But I think they leave some of that out, I believe, in the summertime.
Most of them have been putting it all away at night.
Do they?
Just because they don't want it to end up in the street.
Yeah. And I think that's kind of covered in here.
A lot of communities that allow this allow them to leave it out for a duration in the summertime, and then spot-use it in other months.
Yeah.
When it's more weather-dependent.
Yeah.
But there are some core months when sometimes they leave them out. It's at their own peril, but...
Is that something they're going to have to supply a sketch in a... Not necessarily drawing, but a sketch on how the layout...
Just a layout, right.
Yeah, that's in here.
But is that going to have to grant it to set up a permit or have it actually have them? Have somebody come out and look at it, just to see that's what you drew, and there you go.
Yeah, it's not that complex. It should be fairly easy.
And they have to make sure they got the aisles opening up so that people can get through.
Now, on five feet, does that start from the curb?
Yeah, I was going to say, too.
Yeah, what's the definition? Yeah, what's the definition of?
Where it starts and goes. Or it can be anywhere in the middle. Because I know some of ours aren't that wide and some are a little wider.
And then every once in a while, you have a sign that goes into it.
Yeah.
Mr. Moran, you're with the planning commission, correct?
Joe Moran, chairman of the planning commission. Gentlemen, um, Wade Trim, who is the, uh, planning commission meeting Monday, the first Monday in May, to review this ordinance with the planning commission. He was originally scheduled for our last meeting and we postponed it because of attendance issues, but Commissioner Turner stopped by and gave us some ideas to just discuss with you. And since the representative from Wade Trim will be there this coming Monday for this coming meeting, I invite any of you to come in.
Yeah, that's good.
If you have questions, concerns, what does five feet mean, I'm sure they can supply that information.
So at this point, this is just all information?
Yeah, I'll have my input prior to that meeting into Wade Trim.
Mr. Avery.
I may not have seen it, but is there any regulation for vendors that set up that aren't from town? For instance, in festivals or various things that are in the road, when the road is shut down for the festival, is that regulated? Just, this only seems to be directed specifically to something in front of somebody's business.
Yep.
So far.
Yep.
We, on, uh, that's a separate inspection and, uh, permit process for that. That's done through the, usually through the, whatever festival is set up and it's inspected both by fire and, um, I believe, and police and DPW do a walkthrough on special event permits like that.
Okay, well, one of the things that had come up before on that is that, uh, a vendor will set up a food display right in front of one of our established restaurants. There needs to be some planning so we at least don't, you know, the established businesses are being inconvenienced because people can't park or do anything by there. So we ought to pay some attention to not having some tank upon operation come in, set up.
And to the maritime base, they did work on that extensively last year, trying to move things around, trying to avoid that. And that's one of the only ones we actually shut the street down for.
Yes, Mr. Clausen?
I always said that I went to a class, this week was a six-hour class, on ADA, and the book's about three quarters of an inch thick, and they got a definition for router travel and stuff like that, and that's federal law, so. And I believe the minimum is five feet. You also have to...
Anyone else have any more comments on this?
Um, yeah, just so that we follow up. Um, so currently, right now, as far as forms or applications, we have four that somewhat tie into this. Right-of-way use, construction permit application. I don't know if that, that specifically deals with this. We have two sign permits, temporary and permanent, and we have site plan review. Site plan review involves a planning commission. This specifically says that it would be approved by ordinance administrator, which in this case is Susan. So I guess the question is, again, to try and fast track it, what, what type of application would a person have to fill out? It talks about a site plan or, or just a sketch of what you intend to use the sidewalk for? So I would think a, a sketch given to Susan, description of what they plan to do with it, and we'll have to come up, I guess, with some type of a permit to use, but in the, in the meantime, might be sufficient.
Should be just a layout sketch.
Yeah, that's what it says in here, just a sketch.
And then if it's complete, it should be issued.
Right. So it talks about cafe service. Well, like, the ice cream, the sweet tea, could, could they have their people come outside and serve? Could Zimmerman's, you know? I don't know. I guess, I'm wondering, how far do, how far do you take this in, in terms of outdoor service, you know? What is considered outdoor service? So if someone sets up a hot dog stand or, or does, uh, wants to give away cheese and sausage that they're selling in their place or something, is that permissible? You know, I know the health codes get into it, too, health issues, but, uh, I guess, we gotta think it through.
Yeah.
I know for years, the, we have numerous antique stores and they always put stuff out front when they open up in the morning, so they've been doing it all along, which is great. You know, that's fine. They're, they're advertising their wares, so. But since these new ordinances are coming and because it's seasonal, that's why I ask that we start discussing this and figure out and not wait till, you know, June, July to start talking about it, so.
Is this one buried in that big package then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we needed this one a lot sooner.
Okay.
If you notice other ones that you want to pull out of order, just do it.
I haven't seen them yet.
Yeah, just kind of, if they're seasonal, pull them out.
Yeah. Well, I texted, but outdoor displays located on public sidewalks. What, what is an outdoor display? I mean, if you, if you own an antique store and you're pulling stuff out to sell on, on the street, is that a display? I don't know. Are you selling on the street, you know? I, I'm not trying to stop any of it. I encourage it all. I think it's great, but we just have to figure out what's gonna be reg, how it's gonna be regular there, so.
Anybody got anything else? Moving on to disbursements, including payroll of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-two cents.
Disbursement as stated? You want to figure? Hundred, uh, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine, twenty-two.
Can I get a second?
Evidently not.
I'll support it.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on disbursements, including payroll?
I got a few questions, but see, I mean, there's not here, so I guess I have to wait on that to ask you.
Anything else for disbursements? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hendricks?
No.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to preliminary financial statements. Get a motion to receive and file.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements.
Support. No, that's fine.
Motion, support. Any questions on it? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We don't have a city manager's report. Do we have an acting city manager's report?
Absolutely not. It's all right here.
All right, we're gonna move on.
I do have one thing to say. Remind, um, everybody of our budget workshops next Tuesday, Wednesday, possibly Thursday, from six to eight P.M. here in the fire hall.
Well, we're gonna move on to commissioner privilege. Mr. Avery, you have something for us?
Yes, I do, at this point. When the discussion on TIFRA came up, a question was called and we then voted. It was, I was confused as to what we were voting on at that point, calling the question or the actual call on the TIFRA vote. And I think on important votes like this, since they're somewhat confusing, when we vote on something, it should be read out. This is the vote. So at that point, I'm really sorry if some people couldn't figure out that it was a little confusing. I understand that very few people can hear anything back there, so you have to wait till the TV time comes. And we're appreciative that they do that. So I'm really sorry if somebody thinks that I needed to know how I was going to vote on TIFRA.
Mr. Avery, I do wanna take a little bit of, you know, I should have announced that more, that I wasn't, it wasn't a call to vote. It was just, we're moving on with the thing, calling the bill to order. That was as chair, that's my fault. So I do wanna take a little bit of responsibility for that, so.
And I think, I think, Mr. Avery, I interrupted to make sure that you knew what you were voting on, if you recall.
Yes, when it...
Because I sensed...
You saw I looked dumbfounded.
No, I didn't say that.
I took...
I saw you, I, I saw you had a, a question.
Questioning look.
Right. I wanted to make sure you knew what you were voting on.
Yes. And at that point, that's when Commissioner Lovely did indicate how the vote would go since she knew what I was voting on. And thank you, Mayor. That, that's accepted gratefully.
Mr. Clausen?
I did the same thing, but, uh, basically I found out after, and we learned through mistakes or things that happened, and I learned that if we get confused like this, we can always ask the clerk to read back the motion.
Be happy to.
And have her do it often. That's good.
And I've had, the other thing I have is I've talked to quite a few people, and I like to talk to Mike and the city manager first, but I've had some downtown businesses asking about handicap parking, so. That's all I have.
Um, I just want to touch on a couple of things. I know somebody brought up the investigation and, just so you know, our city manager's been on vacation last week and this week, so she's been out of the area. Um, and she also, I talked to her a little bit, too, to make sure things were on track, but she is also waiting for that case to be completed.
Yes.
And then before she could obtain all of the information so she can do a totally thorough investigation on it. So she hasn't forgotten, it's just that this vacation came in at a, at a time, but she will be on it as soon as she gets back here, but she comes back Monday. So that will be back in the works, so hang tight on that. And just on the rental program thing, um, that's also in that seventy-page document, I believe, is the rental information?
The rental inspection ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, so until we get an updated rental inspection program, she can't really do a whole lot because she'd be doing it once and then she'd have to do it again when we get the new ordinance. So unfortunately, this document is a big one and she's trying to get, we're trying to get it all done kind of at once from the company, but when that's done, she will start with the whole process and she's gonna go through in sections just like we did with the sidewalk program. So it's unfortunate that it's taken a little longer, but there's a lot to go through, so, and we want to make sure everything is thorough. It's gonna cover inside and out, I believe, so there's more things in there than what we originally had.
It's a registration and an inspection program.
Correct. So, uh, so we are working on it, so, thank you.
All right. All right. Mr. Davis, you have anything for us?
No.
You sure? Your attorneys always have something to say.
I don't get paid by the word.
I can, I can talk, whatever you want.
No, I'm good. I'm good. We're good. We're good. Um, I don't have a whole lot for tonight. Uh, I think this, the handicap swing thing's a really interesting and good program, and I know Mike's gonna be helping out as much as he can behind it, and if he, uh, he's got some other contractors, he taps for different things, I, you know, they'll be getting phone calls for assistance and we'll help out when we can and, uh, get it taken care of.
You might want to address the big excavation project.
Right now, Mike's working on a major sewer collapse on North Elizabeth right now, and I got called over there this afternoon and he's got a mess. Um, Mike, you want to address a little bit of that?
Not really.
I know. I, I didn't want to go over there today either.
Well, in the rain, we had Sunday, took out a good portion of sewer on North Elizabeth. Ten-inch sewer and it's roughly eleven feet down. Got into it today, rented a trench box, got down there, realized it's beyond my extent that I can do without the equipment, so called Mayor Dave over, he took a look at it, had to get a contractor in to take care of it. Looking at about forty feet, we're gonna have to replace. It's down, it's gone.
And it's wide.
It's wide.
Whole street's gone.
What's that?
Whole street's gone.
Yeah.
From curb to curb.
So, so it's a big mess.
That's one that you've had issues with, though, in the past. It's one we couldn't get camered because of the blockages in it.
Blockage, yes, and now we know why. So, but we jetted it out on Monday because we had problems with it. On Tuesday, I got called over there, we had a five-by-six hole roughly eight feet deep. So that's what spurred the whole thing and, so contractors will be over there tomorrow, start that. They already got their equipment posted and hopefully we'll get this back up and running by Saturday.
All the neighbors have been notified?
Yep.
Good.
Everybody's good down the street.
Yeah, well, three and a half inches of rain's a lot of rain to get all at once.
Yes. Yeah, Sunday was a nightmare.
And I'm amazed it's that one and not the other one.
No.
I know, I know, don't say it.
Speaking of that one, we do have a, um, meeting on Tuesday to get over the schedule and when they're gonna start over there.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right, thanks, Mike. How about a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.